Paper number 11,646-A, Recommendation of the Planning Board Regarding the Zoning Ordinance for Licenseed Marijuana Establishments. Without objection, file the communication. And all in favor of filing the communication?
I.
I.
Oppose? Onto paper number 11,646-A, An Ordinance Amending the Revised Ordinance, Chapter Z, by Adding the New Subsection, Section 10.12, Licensed Marijuana Establishments. This was in City Council, February 13, 2018. It was voted to refer to the Planning Board. It was voted to refer to Public Safety Committee and postponed to a meeting of February 27. Without objection, the President postponed the meeting to March 13, which is where we are, and we need a motion to pass to a second reading and post as a municipal bulletin.
Point of clarification?
We can do this at discussion if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it can be, either way, we can discuss it, but then you can ask all the questions you want.
Well, but my question is, where is the language from the Planning Board?
You should have received it. It's actually going to be part of...
It was, it was on the table, passed out when we came in.
Yeah.
I got it as a communication from Mr. Leary of the Planning Board.
Did we give that copy?
I gave public safety.
Yeah. Well, we can move on to discussion, and if that needs to be...
I've got a copy of it right here.
If you want.
I can pass it over.
So, the communication that we received, and I think this is the answer, basically, they agreed to the edits that we had suggested.
Well, before we really, I'd rather get into discussion if we can.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where that paper is.
So, if we could have a motion, we had...
A motion.
A motion and a second, then we can discuss all we want.
Second.
All right, Hopkins, a second. All right, now we're going to open and discuss it all we want. So, Councilor LaForest, your question is about not, did you get a paper? You haven't received any paper at this point?
Yes, no, I've received this, but I thought this was updated with the inclusion from the Planning Board.
No.
Okay.
So, the way this works is we go back to the original motion. At this point, we have not approved or voted in any of the amendments. Okay, the committees may have, and it was discussed, but it has not been approved. So, that's what we'll be doing tonight. All right, any other discussion? Yes?
I'd like to request that we take the amendments proposed by the Planning Board one at a time, because I have objections to the third one.
Okay. I've got to call those sheets out. You've got your sheets, too, just in case. Correct. And then there's, so there's going to be amendments from the Planning Board, and then there's suggested amendments also from the Public Safety. And then it looks like we have possible amendments, Councilor Bunnington of your own?
Yes.
Okay, so there will be, we'll try to handle them individually. And let me just get to the sheet. All right, so, the planning board, sorry, oh, here it is, right in front of me. Got it covered up with my agenda. Okay, um, yeah, so continue discussion. Go ahead, Councilor Bunnington.
Well, I'll start by making a motion to amend the ordinance with the first change suggested by the Planning Board, which is to change Section C-3, changing daycare facility to daycare center.
Second. Any particular discussion on that? Yes, Councilor Lamb?
I think just to be clear, that that's also part of a larger edit of that paragraph. So, I think changing that and then the other changes proposed are fine, but just to be clear, that's just, that's the first edit of that paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do any of the, do any of the councilors that were present want to just clarify, or Councilor Lamb, again, just the daycare center and daycare facility?
Sure, so, and this kind of pertains especially more as we get into the full paragraph edits, but the definitions of a daycare facility versus a daycare center have to do with the size of the daycare venture itself. So, by changing from daycare facility, as it's currently worded, which basically refers to any and all, that includes, you know, if you have a spare bedroom that you use as a daycare, you know, any facility of that type, to daycare center, which focuses more on the larger scale facilities that are established. So, that includes things like the YMCA, Childcare of the Berkshires, and there's a third one as well that I can't think of the name, Johnson School currently, but that's not where they'll be permanently. So, it really focuses on those when you say center. So, that was where that language change came out of.
Okay. Any, yes, Councilor LaForest?
Also to note, you know, it was indicated that most of the daycare facilities are privately owned, located in private homes, and fall in residential districts where licensed marijuana establishments would not be permitted. And I'd also note that in the final regulations of the CCC, published on the 6th of this month, all references to a setback to daycare facilities and daycare centers was dropped from their language.
Again, this is only discussion on specifically this amendment, which is changing daycare facility to daycare center. Is there any other discussion from councilors or the public? Okay, so, we need, this is not a roll call, so we can just have all in favor of this amendment?
I.
Oppose? That amendment passes. All right, now, Councilor Bunnington, you want to go to the second one?
Sure, I'll do the honors. I move that we amend the ordinance as proposed in the second request from the Planning Board, which is specifically, give the special permit granting authority, that is to say, the Planning Board, the ability to waive or modify the 500-foot setback by using the same language used in Section H.4. Quote, "The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement," unquote, except in the urban renewal district where the special permit granting authority is by the North Adams Redevelopment Authority.
Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, Councilor LaForest? And now we can go into discussion. Yes, Councilor Lamb?
I'm curious where this would, would it be a new number under Section C? Is that what we're aiming for here? Because it refers to Section H.4.
Oh. Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor LaForest?
Can I clarify this? And also for the record, my initial question, which I realized was out of order, was because the language is on six different pages.
Yes.
So, for the record, may I read what the intent of the Planning Board was in amending this?
Sure, sure. Yeah, no, I was going over the papers this morning with the clerk and assistant clerk, and it is, it can be confusing, because it's a little bit back and forth, so, go ahead, please.
The intent of the Planning Board here was to amend Section C-3, which is the paragraph in which most of the work has been done in terms of modification, modifying the original work of the original language. And so, with this amendment, Section C-3 would read, "All LMEs, licensed marijuana establishments, must be set back at least 500 feet from any school, daycare facility, or similar facility where," I'm sorry, daycare, daycare center, "or similar facility where organized youth activities occur. Distances shall be measured by a straight line between the nearest structure of the said facility and the LME building. Outdoor facilities or structures such as playgrounds shall be considered part of the facility." And now, the line, "The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement," and I think I'm wrong, but I thought that that was to be included here. Yes, right, so this, from Section H.4, this language is now attached to this, "The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement." And then it continues this note here, except as in the redevelopment authority, but that's not to be included in Section C-3.
So, you're saying it's currently in the wrong? Yes, Councilor Lamb?
So, we did this backwards. So, we should have done the public safety edits before we did this, because the public, the Planning Board addendum is to the new language that we proposed from public safety.
Right, this is very convoluted.
Yes.
I mean, it, yeah, and unfortunately, they're in front of us in different papers, too. Go ahead, Councilor Bunnington.
This might help, my, the paper that I handed out with my proposed amendments, amendment number one, is, is, is just what I believe to be the language from the Public Safety Committee, and also the, this recommendation from the Planning Board.
You're correct.
Yes.
Is that, there is, there's a, I'm not sure if I've heard the sentence there about the second-to-last sentence, "Outdoor facilities or structures such as playgrounds," is that proper? Is that?
"Outdoor structures such as playgrounds shall be considered..."
Shall be considered, okay, so...
So, that is correct, yeah. We do have a motion and a second currently on the floor, though, for the two. So, if you rescinded that, and then...
Okay, I'll rescind my motion to amend.
Okay.
And if I may, then move to amend, as specified in my amendment number one, which is replacing the text of C-sub3 with the following.
Does everyone have Councilor Bunnington's amendments?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so please, everybody, proofread me on this. "All LMEs must be set back at least 500 feet from any school, daycare center, or similar facility where organized youth activities occur. Distances shall be measured by a straight line between the nearest structure of the said facility and the LME building. Outdoor facilities or structures such as playgrounds shall be considered part of the facility. The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement."
Right. So, we need a second on that motion.
Second.
Okay, now we can go to discussion on that amendment. Yes?
I'm not really too sure about the last sentence, "The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement." Is that general operating procedure, does standard operating procedure? It just seems like we went through this whole process, we had a public forum, we had a lot of people that came in and addressed this issue, and the 500 feet from school, daycare center, and organized youth activities seem to be a pretty big topic for a lot of people in the community. So, I would just, I'm just questioning, you know, we would go through this whole process, and then it can just be changed. I think it's important to have that type of thing done in a public forum. The Planning Board certainly is very qualified to make these decisions, but here at the council, we actually, it's more of a public forum, we're on TV, we have, you know, people come and have open forum and that type of thing. So, I just think it's more of a public issue, just because it seemed to be a sense of contention for some people in the public and through our public meetings, so...
Councilor Wilkinson?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, we did so much at all those meetings, wasn't this wording put in there to mimic the state wording? Isn't the state have the same authority to have it less than 500 feet? I believe somebody mentioned that they were putting that in to match something to do with the state's language.
First, Councilor Hopkins.
I'm sorry, I understand Councilor Harpen's point, but any waiver or change to the setback distance would be publicized, there would be, that would go through a public hearing as part of the Planning Board process?
Councilor Lamb?
In terms of the, the distance piece, to Councilor Wilkinson's point, I don't know that the state necessarily had specific distances from each type of entity, correct? So, for instance, when we were discussing this during the Public Safety Committee, a suggestion, which isn't in here anywhere, but it was a suggestion made by someone, was you could say 100 feet from parks, and 500 feet from this, and so on and so forth, which we didn't get into that. But I don't know if Councilor LaForest might actually have more input on the actual...
There's actually a default buffer for schools, pre-existing public or private K-12 schools, unless a local ordinance or bylaw reduces the distance requirement. Many, many communities in the, in the area, actually, and across the Commonwealth, have reduced that buffer to 250 feet or some other lesser distance. But the Planning Board, with the input from the BRPC, indicated that this line would be helpful if an applicant chose to cite somewhere that the Planning Board deemed appropriate, but would fall within, you know, that 500-foot buffer. So, in a, in a rare circumstance, it just, it clarifies that the Planning Board may do its work as set up in the charter.
Yes, Councilor Bunnington?
I'd like to support Councilor Harpen's view, that by making this, by adding this last sentence, saying that the Planning Board may modify or waive the requirement, we are effectively making it, well, we are making it discretionary. And although that gives the Planning Board more certainty, it removes certainty from the applicant, because now they, they have to, they will consider properties that aren't compliant, because they may not have to be. And I think if we're, I agree that if we're going to the trouble to set these rules, life will be simpler if they're actually rules.
Yes, Councilor Collins?
Just for a point of clarification, now, for the sale of alcohol, does this wording mimic the ordinance for that? Is it, is it flexible as well on, on that ordinance?
Anyone want to respond to that?
Because I would, I would support consistency, but if we're doing this for the, you know, without any backup, I'm going to support Councilor Harpen on that as well.
Does anyone actually have that information?
I'm trying to look it up.
I would just like to just respond that there have, there are many times where the city, in a sense, does allow sort of special permitting for cer, certain circumstances. So, you know, I'm only using this as an example, but let's say one of the daycare centers, there's a facility that wants to open up 490 feet from it. And let's say this center now has only five children. Legally, under the ordinance, they could not, but by allowing the special permitting, they can come in, and they could ask and use that as an example, and say, "Look, we're only 10 feet from the 500 feet. It's a center, but it's only 10 children," you know, and they could use that argument. And then the, you know, the authority, the granting authority, would say, look at it and make a judgment, versus if they came in and said, "Well, we're right next door," you know. So, there is that gray area, and I think that's what the, you know, this allows for, is that gray area. So...
Any other councilors at this point? Yes, Councilor?
I just want to make a comment. I think we should let the Planning Board and Redevelopment Authority do their job. They're both good organizations, and to cast something in stone where, as Keith, Councilor Bona said, could be a gray area, it allows discretionary a little bit. Let the boards do their work.
Councilor Moran?
And I believe the comment from the BRPC rep was that these, once these ordinance takes place, these are no longer suggestions. That is, it is set in stone. And by adding this line, "The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement," again, like Councilor Wilkinson says, it allows them to operate within the means that they typically operate. And I highly doubt it, I mean, obviously, you can't say for certain, but I don't think an applicant would be applying to be 10 feet from a school, and they would waive the requirement. I mean, when it comes to these special permits, it is extremely vetted, and you have to show extreme, like, cause of why you're willing to pursue this. It's typically not just the planning and zoning board will move forward under their own agenda, it's still a public forum, and they still have to abide by the rules, yet it gives them just that little bit of wiggle room in case something comes up.
I would like to say also, under the, during the public hearing, there was a Planning Board member who sort of wanted to scrap the whole thing, and I was actually the one who said, "No, it's good to have some rules, but I think it's good also to have that little bit of flexibility." Councilor LaForest?
So, I just want to say, I agree that we have a very knowledgeable Planning Board, and if the language is too concrete, they are going to be stuck by inches and feet in making, you know, a decision or not being allowed to make a decision. The application process for an LME to come into North Adams is extremely formidable to meet both, you know, our requirements and then the state requirements. It's a lengthy and expensive process, and, you know, I just feel that, you know, the Planning Board has a function set up in the charter, and we do have to, you know, give them the opportunity to do their work within the public hearing, balancing the application, the business plan, the site plan, so on and so forth. It's not just, you know, going to be a, you know, a simple decision of, you know, whether or not 10 feet matters.
Other councilors? Public, on this particular, this is again, an amendment, specifically changing Section C-3. I guess, what's that, a motion to all in favor of this? You want more discussion?
No, I'm just confused what you...
Well, we're approving the, that particular amendment at this moment. I mean, there was discussion, I haven't heard anyone request to remove that line as of yet, so, far as I know, that full amendment is on there.
So, just a point of clarification, I just want to make sure that we're not lost in, in the amendments, as I thought, you know, we might have been a couple of weeks ago. So, have we accepted the language of the Public Safety Committee?
Mm-hmm.
Have we accepted that amendment?
He rescinded his original, so, from the document from the Planning Board, we did approve the first one. So, we approved that, the first bullet. Councilor Bunnington motioned the second one, but then rescinded, realizing that his document incorporated all pieces of it, rather than piecemealing that.
We are not voting on the recommendations of the Public Safety Committee at all?
May I clarify?
Sure, go ahead.
This amendment that I, that I proposed incorporates both the second recommendation from the Planning Board and the changes to C-3 proposed by the...
I understand that. I'm asking if the council is voting on its own work in the Public Safety Committee?
At this point, we are taking each section, we've separated them. So, if we approve, we're not, we're not approving their whole recommendation as a whole, we're breaking it up. So, we've approved the first one, the second one, we, if we approved the second one as is, then we'd be re-amending it, because there's a newer one in front of us, so, it's, it would be redundant to...
So, for point of clarification, we're not voting on the language proposed by the Public Safety Committee?
Correct.
Thank you.
And, well, yes and no. I mean, we are voting on it, but we're also...
I understand, it's incorporated into this amendment.
Not as a document, yeah.
I just want to be clear, this is the, the piece of paper and the language that we will be voting on.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Yes?
I would like to make that motion to strike the last sentence in the amendment of Councilor Bunnington's that reads, "The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement."
So, we're sort of in discussion of that amendment, so this is an amendment to...
Yeah, as a point, as a point of order, I haven't done this when we've been on the council, what is, do, can we amend an amendment, or does the amendment need to fail and then get proposed without that last part?
Councilor Lamb?
I believe this happened once before, and we did a fail, like, so, the original amendment was voted on, failed, and then was, a new version was basically proposed. But I think by Robert Tools, you can go either way, so it's really...
I mean, we can, so, we can amend, I believe the, I believe we have amended the amendments before. It gets confusing, because you're amending an amendment to a motion, so you just got to remember what order you're doing in. Or we vote as the amendment that currently is on there, and if it passes, then it's done.
Right.
But you need a second, really, before we can get a discussion. So, right now...
I would second that.
Okay, so, I say we, if we want to discuss that, so right now, Councilor Harpen has requested to eliminate that last line on Councilor Bunnington's amendment. Is there any discussion on that? Yes, Councilor Hopkins?
I'll reiterate what Councilor Wilkinson said, which is that the Planning Board and where it needs to, the zoning board, they exist exactly to do this kind of thing, and that limiting ourselves by not giving them that ability, I think would be a mistake.
Yes, Councilor LaForest?
These ordinances are specifically, you know, legislation and guidance for the Planning Board, and if we remove the ability of the Planning Board to do its work within the, within the ordinances, I'm not sure why we would continue to have a Planning Board. I just feel they should be allowed to do their work, they should be allowed to evaluate an applicant, their business plan, their site plan, and, you know, we're essentially prohibiting them any wiggle room, any, you know, variance within, you know, I mean, the example given this evening was a question of 10 feet. I'm not sure we should deny a legal business the opportunity to come into the city because of a matter of 10 feet, per, you know, per the example we've been using. And so, I, I would, you know, argue that we should allow the Planning Board to execute its function.
Councilor Bunnington, and Councilor Harpen?
I believe it's not good policy to allow much flexibility, simply because if, if these are suggestions rather than rules, it's hard for the Planning Board to implement it. If a business knows that these clearances are required, it will save time, because they will not consider properties that aren't compliant. But if it is phrased as a suggestion and not as an actual requirement, it introduces uncertainty into the process, and the Planning Board still has plenty of work cut out for it, as far as implementing the ordinance as it's set out.
Councilor Harpen?
I just want to make clear, I have full confidence in the Planning Board, in what they do, and, and the job, and the people that are on the Planning Board. So, that is not my question at all. My issue is that we, we had all these meetings, we had public input, and we came up with this, you know, this, this method of marijuana use, and how we're going to put these retail establishments in our city. And so, I think it's important that, once it's established, and we establish policies that were important to the people that came here and spoke, that we should honor that. I think that's important. And I'm not saying that the Planning Board can't have any flexibility, I mean, if they come back here and, and ask for something to, to change, I mean, we can, if we notice that, you know, people are coming because, you know, it's 2 feet or 1 feet, or, and we're getting a lot of changes to this, then yes, we can certainly make a change to, to this, and, and what we do here at the council. It's, I just see it, it's more of a public, I like to have public input, and we've had public input, and if something's going to change, and, and people around, if someone wants to come and, and be within this 500, or not meet the 500 distance, then, then the people should know that. And I know that the Planning Board does do public meetings or whatever, but not everybody follows that. More people follow the city council, and what's going on at the city council, it's more publicized, it's, it's on TV, and I just think that we would reach more people, and it would be more welcoming to the public if this is going to change. So, I mean, that's, that's my point of view.
Councilor Moran?
I guess there's a flip side to this, too, is that if they can modify, there could be an instance where it would be allowed in an area, and the planning and zoning would be able to say, "No, we're not comfortable with it here," because it's not a, you know, it's not exactly a playground, or maybe, you know, where organized youth activity occurs, but something comes up that's unforeseen, that we do not know at this moment. Again, the future is not completely laid out, there could be an, an instance where the planning and zoning could say, "Yeah, we didn't even think of this, and you know what? We do have concerns of an LME coming within 500 feet of this building, and it isn't particularly on our list, but this will allow us to move forward and say, 'No, we do not feel comfortable with it here.'" You know, so I think there's kind of, it's modify or waive, it's not simply that this is going to work in the opportunity that we're supporting business, we're also supporting the community to know that there are unforeseen circumstances that we will not be able to predict.
Councilor Lamb?
Actually, Councilor Hopkins.
Oh, sorry, Councilor Hopkins.
Just to remind, the Planning Board always has the ability to deny a special permit request. It's subject to appeal, but they always have that ability.
I think my question kind of gets a little bit broader here, and I'm curious if the mayor, Councilor LaForest, can speak to this. When it comes to the actual process for an LME to enter any community at this point, there is a required agreement between the municipality and the organization, correct? Like, it's a letter, basically?
Well, there, there would be a community host agreement, but the, the first step would be either a letter of, of endorsement or non-objective.
Well, there would be a community host agreement, but the first step would be either a letter of endorsement or non-objection. So saying that we would not oppose an entity locating or citing in the city.
So that leads to my second question. With that second layer of kind of community agreement with it, would a location have to be designated prior to that point?
It would be done through the state process. So the thing to keep in mind is, we're talking about the municipal zoning component of this. There is, there are, you know, 150 pages of state regs and an application process that conditions how a business can be licensed to even get to the step of making those agreements within the city. So the zoning provides a framework for those businesses to understand as they look to put a site under control where that site would be.
So the only reason I bring up that piece is I'm thinking of the layers of redundancy that are sort of put in place with any of these proposals. As Counselor LaForest said, it's a fairly formidable process. And so, you know, by the time they get to this point of the actual location, I don't know that they would jump in headfirst into a location just because this line exists. Because they will have gone through, assuming, conversations with the administration about what their plan is, to an extent, to get that agreement. And so to Counselor Moran and Counselor Hopkins, I believe, who said this, with the ability to have that little bit of flex there, and that could be on the, you know, 10 feet distance, or it could be giving them a little bit more latitude to say no when they come forward, even if it does sort of fit in here. But they know that there's going to be a new splash park being built within proximity of a location. It's not there yet, but they know it's going in, and it's not necessarily in the books. So they could still say no, because we know this is happening. As it currently stands, I mean, yes, they could say no, but they wouldn't necessarily have the the language sitting there that says, go ahead, modify and make that decision. So I'm just, I don't know.
I'd also like to note that, you know, a lot of times when things go to the planning board, they, you know, notices go out to that area. So, I mean, recently I received one because of a business that was closer to, you know, River Street on Eagle Street, and I have a, I own a house on Hall Street. I got a notice because it was a change of use. So to me, you know, people within that area are going to be well informed. They're going to actually get a mailing directly to them. Counselor Hopkins?
I'm just nodding to back up what you're saying. Yes, if you own a property within 300 feet of the property, that's the question of an application, you'd be notified.
Counselor LaForest.
Thank you. In this instance, a business, a proposed LME has to meet the requirements of local ordinances prior to submitting an application to the state. And before that even, they have a requirement, a burden even, within the regulations published by the CCC on March 6th to themselves host a public hearing. They're responsible for the public hearing, not the city, inviting all of the abutters for, you know, discussion and presentation before they're even allowed to move forward with the process. And that's a requirement within the regulations.
Just to remind ourselves and the public where we are currently at, we are discussing an amendment, which is specifically the last line of Counselor Buddington's amendment, which is, "The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement." Is there any discussion in the public on that specific amendment? Not hearing any. I want to do a roll call on this. I'd like to do a roll call of Counselor Harpen's request to remove that last line from Counselor Buddington's amendment. I feel sorry for the city clerk who's got to do these minutes. Okay, go ahead.
Clarification?
Yes.
So we're voting on removing the language?
Removing that last line. That's all we're voting on right now.
And point of clarification, have we accepted the amendment?
We have not.
Do that afterwards.
This is an amendment within the amendment that we have not accepted yet.
So we're amending it prior to vote, prior to...
In other words, if it fails, the amendment Counselor Buddington brought forward stays as is. If it passes, then it's changing his amendment.
Okay.
Getting all that, Tammy?
All right. I'm sure everyone home is scratching their heads, because some of us are. Okay, go ahead. Roll call.
Okay, Buddington.
Yes.
Cohen.
To be clear, a yes is to remove it, a no is to keep it as is.
No. Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Liam?
No.
LaForest?
No.
Moran?
No.
Wilkinson?
No.
Bona?
No.
So currently, the amendment stays as Counselor Buddington has brought forward to us. Now we can do further discussion on that amendment if we need to. Any other discussion on the amendment that Counselor Buddington has presented? Not hearing any. We will now vote on, again, this is just the amendment. Yes, Counselor Lamb?
Might you read that amendment specifically into the record, just?
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, put myself in that. So this is the amendment by Counselor Buddington. So, "All LMEs must be set back at least 500 feet from any school, daycare center, or similar facility where organized youth activities occur. Distances shall be measured by a straight line between the nearest structures of the said facility and the LME building. Outdoor facilities or structures such as playgrounds shall be considered part of the facility. The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement."
Actually, Counselor Buddington did read that, didn't he?
I did, but clarification's good. I hate to prolong this, but I would like to offer a really tiny amendment because I realize that, I think the number 500 should be before the word feet, for clarity, rather than after.
So you want to...
So I will move to... No.
No, he's correct.
No, it's correct.
Oh, you have, I see, 500 feet. I'm sorry, I left out the, that apostrophe to mark feet. Never mind. I will not accept that motion.
We are voting on Counselor Buddington's amendment, which Counselor Lamb just read. That's also in front of us. Nothing has been changed to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Well, the amendment passes. All right. Now we are, again, we have, we are taking this apart in sections. So we're moving on to the third amendment.
The third recommendation from the planning board?
Yeah, a third recommendation. Go ahead.
And, again, if Counselor Buddington's is yours on that one, let me see.
No, I didn't include this.
Okay, so we have nothing newer on that.
And this is the one I don't support, but I'll introduce it anyway so we can discuss it.
Okay, go right ahead.
Third, I propose that we amend the ordinance as suggested in the third recommendation from the planning board, which is change section E dot one to, "The special permit granting authority for any LME shall be the planning board, except in the urban renewal district where the permit granting authority is the North Adams Redevelopment Authority."
Second. Okay, Counselor Hopkins, second. Now, discussion. Go ahead.
I'll speak against the amendment I just proposed, which, the rest of our zoning ordinances, this is true for all of our zoning ordinances. The permit, special permit granting authority is always the planning board, except for the redevelopment zones. And it is true, because of the redevelopment authority's charter, that none of ordinance Z, our zoning ordinance, applies to that area. And so my argument is simply that this language is unnecessary.
Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Lamb? Counselor Wilkinson?
I'm going to counter that a little bit and just say, to someone who doesn't necessarily know that, it would, for me, it's a clarification point for someone who's, you know, if it's an outside entity looking at coming in, they're not necessarily going to know that this urban renewal district even exists, let alone that it's a different authority over it. So to me, it actually makes sense to have it in there, even though there is a level of redundancy to it as a piece of clarification. Because if that were to also change down the road, then that could be fixed.
Counselor Wilkinson, then back to Counselor Buddington.
I was just going to say the exact same thing. I think having it in there clarifies it better.
Counselor Buddington.
I, just to add a little more information, I'm sorry, did I preempt Counselor Harpen?
No, I just wanted to let him know that I wanted to say something.
I looked through the sections for the permits that the planning board issues. And there's, it starts with flexible residential development, veterinary hospitals, it goes on. There are 11 sections, and of those, only two of them, wireless and campgrounds, specify who the permit granting authority is as the planning board. And neither of those excludes the redevelopment zones.
Counselor Harpen?
Yeah, I just want to mention, I know the mayor had mentioned at the last meeting that the North Adams Redevelopment Authority is still, it's something that he's looking into. And whether or not it's going to be even an authority in the next, whatever, year or less than a year, I don't know. It seems like it's something that he's looking into, if I'm, if that's what he said at the last time. So if we put this in here unnecessarily, are we going to have to go back after and then take it out? Or is it just eliminated? I mean, so I'm just saying, we're putting it in there, and it might not actually be something that we need down the road anyways, so.
Counselor Wilkinson?
It's going to take a lot more than a year if you're going to dismantle the redevelopment authority. It owns property in North Adams. It almost takes an act of legislature, though, even though I think we're going to find out this body could probably dissolve it with a change in ordinance. I bet you five years it's still here.
Counselor Lamb?
Throw the chair to the mayor?
Go ahead.
Can you speak to this? I know that Counselor Harpen brought it up, but I'm just curious if you have...
Sure. Short answer, I don't know. The longer, the longer answer is that we are still looking into it. The advice that we got from DHCD is that the zoning that exists in the city to grant that authority to the, what they call the UR1 area, to the redevelopment authority does seem to be solid, even though the urban renewal plan itself has expired. The solicitor is doing one more look to make sure of that. He's going to have something to me within the week so that by the time that we get to the meeting where this is finalized, I will be able to speak to that point. But at the moment, the authority of the redevelopment authority over the UR1 zone appears to be intact. Again, I don't want to go much beyond that while it's still under consideration and investigation. But it does. And given the question that prompted this whole investigation two meetings ago, there's probably a benefit to keeping some clarification for as long as we know that those two areas are contiguous downtown.
Thank you. Counselor Moran?
Also to note that in looking at the map, a lot of area where these LMEs can exist is in an urban renewal development. Specifically, if they don't have to follow the exact same guidelines that's laid out by planning and zoning. So just because, I mean, yes, when you do citywide, the urban or the redevelopment authority might not, most of it is concentrated to the one downtown area where we're most likely going to see an LME.
Did you have your hand up? Anyone over here?
No, I was just, for clarification purposes, and maybe Counselor Buddington can talk to this. It says in your notes, "The council-approved Mayor Alkenbryt's proposed changes to generally remove permitted uses from the text of the zoning." Can you tell me a little bit about that? I wasn't here then.
May I respond? Yes. So several years ago, there was a major rewrite under Mayor Alkenbryt of the zoning ordinances, which was not a substantive change. But in the old ordinances, the, for every use, there was a list of where each... Oh, I'm sorry, that's, this is not, that's a different amendment. That's not...
Yeah, you're not, yeah, this isn't...
I apologize.
I like the question, and I want to answer it.
I take back the question.
Yeah, I was getting, okay. Counselor Lamb?
So just two pieces here to touch base on. So I believe, and as, you know, as the rest of tonight goes on, I believe it'll come out more, but that in the end, the idea here is to refer whatever our ultimate decision is to the redevelopment authority to hopefully create consistency across measures in terms of how they approach these as well. So it's not to say that we're going to put these ordinance in the play and redevelopment authority can go rogue and do whatever. In theory, I guess they could. But the idea here is to create some sense of consistency across the various bodies that are approaching these things. So that's just one thing. And then the other one that I want to mention is, similar to the timeline question of, you know, in a year or two years, would this, if the redevelopment authority or the urban renewal district kind of phased out, just thinking of the recent shift, or the, yeah, shift, I believe, of properties and funds from the housing authority, was it the, yeah. That takes a long time, and that was just internal to city operations. That wasn't even something where we had to involve, you know, a legislative body external to make any shifts. So I do anticipate that any changes would be fairly far out in terms of a redevelopment authority change.
I would like to answer part of that question also, where if, at the time, you know, the redevelopment authority, the urban renewal district does get dissolved, you know, it would still be, it's in the ordinance, you can't just eliminate it. It would, at that time, have to be an ordinance change. It wouldn't, in a sense, be effective or enforceful because it doesn't exist. I think if you go through our ordinances now, that you will find, there are streets in there that no longer exist. There are titles in there that no longer exist. We try to hit them when we hit certain topics, but there are just some things that are outdated, and you have to move forward around them or at that time, you try to fix them also. So.
Okay, so we have any other discussion from the council or the public on that third amendment? Again, we are still on amendments. Yes, go ahead, Counselor LaForest.
So I just want to say very quickly that this is an evolving area of law. And while I'm not a lawyer, and most of the commissioners on the CCC are lawyers, I see no harm in clarifying that questions of ordinances in the redevelopment authority should be directed there.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. One against?
One opposition? I've got some notes here. You're going to need more paper. Okay, now we have Counselor Buddington. You have some...
I have one more amendment for this I'd like to propose. Just for clarification, there were three amendments that I handed out, but the third one is not for this agenda item. I just numbered them different, so we can not get confused, hopefully. So section C, well, sorry, I, that, I propose that we amend the ordinance to replace section C with just the text of C sub 3, the third item in that list. Get a second now. I can explain more.
Yeah, please.
Second.
Go ahead, yes.
We have a second from...
Yes, Counselor Moran. What's that?
May I clarify?
Okay, yes.
Okay. So if you notice, sections 1, 2, and 4 of section C are listing which zones allow LMEs to... Yeah, to be active. But there's also, in this ordinance, changes to the table. I forget what the proper name of this table is, but it's the one that says what uses are permitted in which zones. So these lists, the items 1, 2, and 4 in section C contain the same information. Now, just, I want to say about a year ago, the council approved a major zoning change where all of this kind of redundancy was removed en masse from the ordinances. And it makes them a lot easier to read if we don't specify the same thing twice. And it also eliminates the chance that it could contradict itself if it says one thing in the text and another thing in the table. So my proposal is simply to leave C 3 in place, and, I mean, leave that language there, but remove the parts that are redundant with the table. Is that clear?
No.
No, okay.
Well, yeah, go ahead. Oh, there we go.
Go ahead.
Counselor Hopkins?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Bundington, but his point is that Sections C1, C2, and C4 are information in detail that is already included in the Use Regulation Schedule that you see at the back of this. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. Sorry, yes.
Perfect.
Appendix A.
That was my question.
So therefore, he's saying it's not necessary to do it twice.
So would, would Section C say C table, or do we just... Would it refer to the table? Is that what you are thinking? Or would it just eliminate the verbiage altogether?
I believe the table is already referenced elsewhere in the zoning ordinance, so we don't need to.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Wilkinson.
Well, the only question I have then, if we're still going to keep 1 and 2 as two separate items, and just eliminating some of the verbiage, because number 1 refers to cultivation facilities, number 2, retail establishments, those are two totally different items. We can't just eliminate it.
Counselor Bundington and Counselor Lamb.
To address Counselor Wilkinson's concern, those are separate lines in the table. So in the table, they are separated, so that same logic is carried over.
Does everyone have that table?
Yeah, it's attached to the packet we got.
Just making sure. Yes, Counselor LaFors.
Where is the reference to the table in the language?
Counselor Hopkins, sorry.
Right now, there is no reference to it in Section C. There may be elsewhere in it, but there is no reference to it in Section C. And so we may need to.
Can I?
Counselor Cohen.
Can I make an amendment to add verbiage, or no, not now?
Yeah, we can make amendments to take out. We can make amendments to add.
So I have a motion to amend and add C table, or if anybody else had anything else.
Oh, yes, the mayor. Yeah, sorry.
I think I can clear up some of the confusion. Counselor Bundington shared this recommendation with me and Ms. Bernstein, and I think what he's looking for is language I had suggested to him as a way to get that reference into the document, in our email exchange.
Okay.
So, may I offer that to the counselor?
Yes. I think right now, the question is making sure it's clear that it's being referred to that table.
Yes.
And that language is?
Okay, so my amendment does not take care of that, but the mayor's reminding me, he did send me language, which I neglected to include. So if, I'd like to withdraw my motion to amend and replace it with a better one.
Is it in writing?
It is in writing.
So what you have there is the full amendment?
Yes.
Okay, well, you can rescind your motion, or your amendment.
Okay, so...
And are you making a motion for a new amendment?
I am going to, if you humor me. So I move that we amend the ordinance, changing Section 10.2C, so that the main text reads, designated locations for marijuana establishments. The locations designated by the City of North Adams where an LME may be cited are delineated in Appendix A, parentheses, Use Regulation Schedule, close parentheses, retail, sales, and commercial uses, wholesale, comma, utilities, comma, transportation, and industrial uses. And then pass that just item number 1, which I believe is just the text for Section C. I'll, I mean, sorry, I believe that this is identical to what's currently bullet number 3. All LMEs must be set back at least 500 feet from any place of worship. Oh, no.
No.
And followed by number 3, as we've already amended it. So this is, I'm sorry, this is getting more complicated.
Just a little. Do you want me to say it?
Sure.
Counselor Lamb.
Counselor Lamb could continue on reading the proper, the amended.
So the motion is making the edits to the initial phrasing of Section C, and then removing bullet 1, 2, and 4, leaving only bullet 3, which will be turned into bullet 1, since it will be the only information there. So it would be the language that Counselor Bundington just read, and then just the paragraph that we edited today already, yeah.
And perhaps we could pass this to the clerk.
I suck at that.
All right, Counselor Cohen.
Yeah, can we get a copy of that as well at some point? Yeah, thank you.
Just keep in mind, this does go to a second reading, so I suggest for the next meeting, we'll have it all written out in front of us.
I don't know if I clarified or confused further in that situation.
It's good. Okay, so we need a second for that motion.
Second.
Okay. Now we, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know I asked for one, but... Yeah, and then Counselor Harpen. And now, any discussion? Yes, Counselor Lamb.
Not to add another layer of confusion, but just to be informed that that orange sheet does not have the correct language for what we already voted on before. So that was before we made the edits tonight, so just for clarification.
Do you want to come up after the meeting, or just to clarify?
You can come tomorrow morning and help me with those minutes.
All right, so this is our fourth amendment, and do we have any other discussion on this? Anyone from the public? Yes. Name and address for the record, please. Again, keep in mind, this is just the amendment, it isn't the full motion.
I have a question, whether I have not ever seen that table, is, I know that the zoning proposed by the zoning work group included the 500-foot setback from places of worship, so are you amending that here, or is that addressed elsewhere?
That...
Can I just have her say her name? She didn't say her name.
Sure, I'm Wendy Penner from the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition. I'm Director of Prevention and Wellness.
Counselor Lamb.
So that was actually the first amendment that, or the, sorry, it was not the first, it was the, was it the first amendment?
That was only considered, I think.
Yes. So the second full amendment that we made removed the places of worship from that paragraph. So now, the, that paragraph reads without the places of worship, and a little bit more language in there. It's the same language, basically, that was brought up at the planning board meeting.
Okay, okay. Well, I mean, I guess I missed my opportunity to comment when you made that vote, so I'll just take the opportunity to comment now that...
Excuse me, but we're on the fourth amendment, so my suggestion would be if you want to discuss, you can come back up in probably a few minutes when we actually are going to be voting on the whole package. Okay, thank you. When we get to that. Yes, Counselor Lamb, did you have anything else to say?
No.
Anyone else on this last amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Or amendment passes? Any other amendments to, I got to remember what paper it was. The ordinance, the original ordinance, Chapter Z, Paper Number 110646-A. The, so now what I need is a motion to pass to a second reading and pass, and post as a municipal, yeah, no?
We did that at the beginning.
Oh, okay, that's right. We've been discussing this. Okay, so, what's that?
We need to do that as amended?
Oh, but should I be, but we've passed the amendment, so now we're just going to go to, yes, Counselor Hopkins.
So we have the revised ordinance.
Correct.
The motion is to send it to a second reading. We've made amendments to it. We can continue discussion of it now, and then vote to send it to the second reading.
So now, Counselor Bundington.
I just wanted to ask if Ms. Penner wanted to...
Yeah, now I'll open up the discussion. Yes, so any other further discussion from counselors on the entire ordinance? Yes, Counselor LaFors.
Have we had the motion to pass to a second reading?
That's, we have.
And we've had the second.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what started the discussion of the amendments, okay? So we're still in that discussion. Think of a bunch of paragraphs, okay, or parentheses. Yes, thank you. Discussion now in, from the public on the entire ordinance. Sorry for the confusion.
Wendy Penner, Director of Prevention and Wellness at the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. And I've spoken about youth marijuana use at every public hearing, and I submitted written comments to the zoning work group and to you as well, late in the day today. So I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at it, but really, the essence of those comments is that I do think that there's reason to believe that how we zone for things like alcohol and marijuana legal substances does impact our youth, and that we do see high rates of marijuana use by youth in our region. And I haven't heard any of you comment on this at all in the conversation. And so I just ask you to keep that in mind, that, you know, what can we as a municipality be doing to address concerning rates of habitual marijuana use by our youth? Because this is an area that was identified as a priority when we did our assessment of youth substance use in the region. And I think people look to North Adams, we're kind of the hub of Northern Berkshire. And, you know, I think it's an opportunity to provide leadership in considering this in the conversation. And, you know, there's different ways to do that. One is how you zone, but, you know, also in how you, you know, share your perceptions about the issue. And so I just, I think it's something I'd love to hear from you about. If it's not in this setting, you know, maybe it's coming back another time to talk with you about the issue. And you're certainly, I would encourage all of you to attend our work group meetings. We really benefit from having engagement from people from all sectors of the community, and your voices are really powerful as elected officials, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I just actually ask Ms. Penner a question? When, just for the record and for our information, when are those meetings?
They've been a little bit ad hoc lately with the weather. I believe our next one is Thursday, this Thursday, at 10:00 a.m. But I'm happy to add any or all of you to our notices that go out. I know Mayor Bernard receives them. And, you know, we can, we can make sure to schedule them around your convenience as well, because we don't have a fixed set time when we meet every month at the moment.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the public? We'll be making the vote on the final motion that will go to the second reading. All right, I want to have this also be a roll call vote, please.
Did Counselor Cohen have?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to make just kind of a personal comment to the MBCC. I mean, you guys do great work. One concern that I've had throughout this whole process, being a mother and being part of, you know, the changes in society that are going on right now, is marijuana is changing in people's eyes. The views of marijuana use are changing, and that's very hard for people to kind of wrap their head around. And I'm really trying to educate myself on a lot of it. And, you know, personally, I will be continuing to go to all education-related forums, push for education in schools, because, you know, there still is all of that research out there that marijuana is a gateway drug for children, and I think that all of us here recognize that. I think we're at a unique opportunity in this city, though, that it outweighs the concerns that I've had, and I've done a lot of research on that. So I appreciate you coming to these, and I truly hope that all these organizations continue to give us feedback and help us move along with the transition that's going to be taking place across the Commonwealth. So thank you.
Counselor Bundington.
With regards to youth use of marijuana, my biggest concern with this whole setup is that it's commercial and that it will lead to advertising. And I think that's going to do a lot to push public opinion towards letting kids think that it's not harmful. And I wish we could have done this non-commercial, but that ship sailed a long time ago.
Yes, Counselor LaFors.
So just since we're on this, there are significant regulations within the CCC guidelines about the marketing and signage and what have you. So the concern for youth has been shared by the CCC, the Working Group, the Public Safety Committee, and the council as a whole. And that is, I think, would say that's been forefront in most of our minds. Most of us, if not all of us, are parents, I think all of us. And, you know, there is a lot of evidence to question the use of, you know, marijuana specifically as a gateway drug. And I think most of the research has shown that, you know, trauma and, you know, addictive personality types, you know, lead to, you know, drug use and heavy drug use. And I understand there's still much work to be done, and hopefully, the federal government will change its understanding of the need for research on this issue, so that the much-needed research can be done.
Counsel Harpen.
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate you coming, Wendy, and there were other people that came to the public forums as well that voiced their concerns about the youth and our policy here. So that was one of the reasons why I thought it was important that we keep the 500 feet, the 500 feet from any school, daycare center, or organize a youth activity. So I thought that was important to keep that in there and not have any flexibility with it, because it's important to protect our children. And it's 500 feet. So I didn't think that that was too rigid, but I didn't think it was, you know, too lenient either. So I thought it was something that we should be able to abide by.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any. Again, I ask for, I would like this to be a roll call vote, please.
Bundington?
Yes.
Cohen? Yes. Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
LaFors?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes. The motion passes, and it will go to a second reading. That was only the first one. Okay, Paper Number 11,014-2, Mayor's Communication Number 13, Recommending Proposed Public Consumption of Marijuana Bylaw. Without objection, file the communication. Mayor, please.
Thank you. Having gone through the zoning regulation at this point, I'll share that the Working Group developed a framework that included a recommendation to present three corollary items related to the regulation of recreational marijuana. This communication covers the first of them, which is a proposed public consumption bylaw for your consideration, and I accordingly request your approval of that attached amendment to Chapter 14, Section 3 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams.
We'll move on, what's that? We'll move on to the ordinance. Yep. So now we are on Paper Number 11,014-2, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 14, entitled Offenses Miscellaneous, Section 3 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, by adding a new section, 14-3.2, Public Consumption of Marijuana and Marijuana Products. Motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
So moved.
Counselor Lamb, Counselor Cohen. Discussion. Yes, Counselor Lamb, and then Counselor Bundington.
Through the chair to the mayor on this, I believe. This language specifically, was it all created in-house, or was there a kind of a framework from somewhere else that was utilized together?
We got some guidance from regional planning, and then the Working Group did some tailoring to that, and made the definitions, for example, more expansive.
Okay, great. And then, kind of along the same lines, does this need to abide by the same timeline as the larger zoning ordinance piece, or is this something that could be delayed, or, well, couldn't be expedited, but delayed in a sense?
Yeah, the mayor can answer, but my personal feeling is if the first one passes, and there's no, you know, this isn't with it, then there's no law of what people, how they can use it either. So, go ahead, mayor.
No, I think that's, I think that's accurate. But again, the... But again, the, in a sense, you're correct, Counselor, because until the licensing is in place, the bylaw isn't, isn't as, isn't as necessary. But I would, I would argue that doing them as a package is beneficial, so that everything is brought forward in the same timeline. And that's, that's the reason it's being brought tonight, so that it will get two readings concurrent with the ordinance.
Counsel Buddington.
Well, I'm glad we're discussing these at the same time. I would argue they're completely legally separate, and there's absolutely no need for them to be tied if we feel we need to take more time to discuss this. I'm not convinced we do, but I would be entirely comfortable taking longer, because if the zoning is in place, that, that's really the time-sensitive thing, whereas the smoking ordinance or marijuana use ordinance will simply take effect as soon as it's passed, whenever that is.
Counsel La Forest and Counsel Lamb.
These are not tied to the ordinances that a potential LME would have to meet with prior to applying to the state for a license to cite here in the city. And my understanding is that in terms of smoking marijuana, at least, that's already prohibited by existing laws of, you know, smoking in public. This was brought about to cover other marijuana products.
That was what I was gonna get at, yeah.
Any other discussion from counselors? Discussion from the public? Yes, Counsel Buddington.
I would like to offer an amendment to this. I find this list to be confusing, and I'm not convinced that it's necessary, so I'd like the council's opinion. This is amendment number three on the paper that I handed out. So I move to amend this proposed ordinance. In Section 14-3.2 Sub A, label entitled "No Public Consumption," strike the list beginning with "well in or upon any street," continuing to the end of the section, and replace it with, quote, "well in any area owned by or under control of the city, comma, or in any place accessible to the public," end quote.
Do we have a second on that amendment? Can't discuss it without a second. All right, second? Any discussion?
Are we not referring this to the Public Safety Committee?
We can. It can be.
Okay, so I would...
It can be.
Can I motion within the conversation regarding to the amendment?
Don't we have to rescind them, the initial motion, to pass it to us? Oh, I guess we could also.
Again, the amendment, he could request amendment to be, since we've been putting amendments within amendments, but he, if you request that this also, make a motion to amend that this also gets sent to Public Safety.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, is that what your amendment is to forward to, to Public Safety for further discussion?
Yes, I would put that motion forward. I think it should be reviewed by the Public Safety Committee before we're voting on it.
Counsel Buddington.
So I have some concerns, because the, I think the change that I'm proposing is significant enough that we would have to republish if we both pass it to a second reading and after this, adopt the, this amendment that I'm proposing. So I'd request that we not pass it to a second reading if we're going to refer it to committee and just delay that until after committee.
So right now, their amendment request is to refer it to Public Safety. Are you rescinding your whole motion then at this point?
I don't think, did I make the motion?
I believe, so I believe I made the initial motion to...
Pass.
Pass to a second reading and publish required by law.
So if I rescind that motion...
Okay, that wipes those two out.
Yep, and then it would still...
So now the, we would need a motion to forward to Public Safety.
A motion to refer this to Public Safety.
Okay, by Counsel La Forest, a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor. We can continue to discuss, or again, it will just get forwarded to Public Safety for further discussion. Yes, Counsel Lamb.
I would just ask, through the chair to the mayor, I don't believe that this will obviously be on the same timeline by doing, which I don't think is an issue. I'm just curious if you had a date definite that you would want to see this all kind of coming through. I mean, the licenses aren't really gonna hit the road until June, July, but there's still edibles in the community now, so it's not necessarily...
I would say this is, this is a sooner, sooner the better. So if it's, if it's practical as a, as a matter of cleanup of, of all of this process to do it to the first meeting in April, which would be what, the, is it the ninth?
Hmm.
Yes. No. I think it's the 11th. Whatever, whatever the first meeting, whatever the first meeting in April is, just, just so that it's as, as close to the, to the kickoff of the licensing process, and then the, it's in place. It's the 10th?
April 10. Counsel Wilkinson?
This thing's been vetted to death. And what I'm reading here in these proposals is perfectly reasonable. You know, we, I don't know if we're gonna argue on whether $50 is too much or $100 is not enough, but to beat this to death more, I understand, but the public should have a right to have input, but how many public meetings have there been on this one subject? And I think it's a better, that we get all the ducks together in a row and pass it in one package. So I'm gonna vote no on sending it to Public Committee.
I would probably clarify that while most of the meetings have been about the zoning and not specifically about penalties. So I don't think there's been much discussion actually on the penalties. Has there, through, Mayor?
This is the first time this has come forward, so this has only been discussed and brought through the, the working group. So this didn't go through the, the planning board. This hasn't been to the Public Safety Committee. So this, this is the first public hearing, if you will, of this.
Other than the working group?
Other than, other than the working group.
Oh, people should have gone on.
Well, this was not a really, truly a focus.
Counsel, sorry, Counsel La Forest, Counsel Cohen, and then was, did you, Counsel Buddington, then Counsel La Forest. Go ahead.
I just want to remind the public that even if we beat things to death, that's kind of our job to do that. Healthy discussion and collaboration and to tear things apart are what I feel most comfortable doing if we're gonna be making something that the public is really kind of up and down about. So I will beat everything to death if I have to and question things. So in this, in this instance, I think that healthy discussion is necessary.
Counselor Buddington, then Counsel La Forest.
Just wanted to clarify or ask to be corrected if I'm wrong, but we have passed the zoning part of this to a second reading, and that's the part that really has to be in place by the beginning of April for the planning board to do its job. I believe these use restrictions do not, will not hold back the planning board or change the licensing process at all.
Correct. Counsel La Forest.
Well, as a member of the working group and the Public Safety Committee, you know, I just want to say that this is not an issue that we really have spent much time on. We have not specifically, you know, announced that we would be discussing this, and I feel the, you know, the public has a, you know, the right to make comment on this.
Thank you. Any other, so right now, the motion is to pass to the Public Safety Committee. That is the motion for further discussion. Any other discussion? Yes, Counsel Buddington.
Could we have a date certain for returning this to council?
First meeting in April.
Oh, did we just...
That's, yeah, that's what I was asking.
Sorry, I didn't understand that that was the discussion.
Okay. Yes, name and record for the, or name and address for the record.
Wendy Penner from Williamstown, Director of Prevention and Wellness at the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition. I just have a question of clarification. So right now, is smoking of marijuana products allowed in places where smoking tobacco is allowed until this restriction is put in place?
I will forward that to the mayor.
I will have to get an answer for you on that. I believe that it is, it is not permitted, but I would have to look at the guidelines and clarify that.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, my understanding from conversation with Director, Police Director Casalio, who is a member of the working group, is that it is illegal, just as smoking tobacco is illegal in public. I may be wrong, but that's my recollection.
Smoking in public is illegal?
Well, not, no.
No, I mean like...
Excuse me, excuse me. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, actually, there's no debating back and forth like this.
Smoking tobacco in public is not illegal. I misspoke. I was referring to places where, places where, you know, smoking tobacco is prohibited, but I believe there is already a law, Massachusetts General Law already addresses the smoking of marijuana in public.
Well, we don't have local laws. It goes to their state law level. So whatever the state currently would have about smoking marijuana in locations is what currently would be what is the law. Yes, Counsel Hopkins.
I can't say for certain, but I believe the law that permits possession of marijuana does not permit you to walk down the street smoking it.
That's correct. Thank you. And again, this will also be going to Public Safety for further discussion. Yes, to name and record for the, name and address for the record.
Brian Sapienza, 113 Pleasant Street. Question, this has been a gray area, and I've seen this in other communities and stuff where the smoking of marijuana, or actually, the smoking of tobacco products in personal vehicles has been debated on whether or not they should restrict it. What is, or if there anything in this ordinance at all regarding the use of marijuana in personal vehicles while they are on a public conveyance such as a street or highway in the city of North Adams or in the state at all? Is there anything that addresses that?
Counselor Hopkins and Counsel La Forest.
I'm gonna say that falls under the same rules as drinking a beer in your car.
Such as the open container.
I'm gonna guess.
Okay.
Well, I believe, again, based on comments made by Director Casalio during the working group sessions, that it is addressed by Massachusetts General Law, and it is illegal.
Counsel Harpen?
I just want to say, I think this is just similar to consuming alcohol, walking down the street. So I think this is what you're trying to mirror here, and it might already be something that's, you know, a state law or whatever, so.
Any other counselors? Any else from the public? Again, this will be going to Public Safety, so definitely allows for much more discussion there. Yes, Counsel?
I just want to reiterate kind of a previous comment that I had about the consistency to alcohol. It keeps coming up. I don't know if you guys noticed that that's kind of like a key word that I continue to hear is, is it the same as alcohol? And I'm hoping that the, the ordinance that we're making and the rules and the laws that we're, that we're creating here are really going to mirror alcohol, so that there's no confusion, public confusion. We have a lot of citizens that are not gonna read the rules. So if we just say it's the same thing as drinking, you know, you can't be drinking on the street, you can't be drinking in your vehicle, you know, you can't be consuming it at the liquor store, I think that that's gonna send a better message for the changes that are coming down, you know, being consistent, so I just...
I tend to use the alcohol laws and the smoking laws, because there is a distinct difference if someone is smoking marijuana when it comes to secondhand smoke versus someone who's drinking. No, the person next to them doesn't really get affected by that, so. But again, these are discussions that can be brought up again at Public Safety. We can, you know, change what's currently in front of us. We can make them stricter, looser. So all in favor of referring to Public Safety?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
One abstention. Motion passes. Paper number 10,393-9, Mayor's Communication Number 14, recommending proposed public consumption of marijuana fines. Without objection, file the communication. Mayor, I'm feeling this has been a...
I'm gonna make a prediction of what's about to happen. This is, this is related to the item that just came before the council. So the first piece was putting in place the prohibition against public consumption. The second communication, I'm sorry, the second ordinance in front of you would be the fine that would be assessed for violations of that public consumption bylaw. So I submit the second of the, the two items recommended by the working group, which is the proposed public consumption fine for your consideration, and accordingly request your approval of the attached amendment to Chapter 29, Section 2, Subsection D of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams.
So we can either get a motion to pass to a second reading and publish by required by law, or we can get a motion to...
Motion to refer to Public Safety.
To go to the paper.
What's that?
We have to actually go to it.
Motion to pass, motion to pass to a second reading and publish required by law, so yes...
You actually have to call out the paper itself, because we, that was just the communication from the mayor. So you actually have to move to the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Paper number 10,393-9, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 29 Non-Criminal Deposition Severability of the Revised Ordinance of the City of North Adams by Adding a New Section 29-2D, Public Consumption of Marijuana and Marijuana Products. Motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
I move to refer to Public Safety along with the other.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion from Counsel Buddington and a section from Counsel Hopkins to refer to Public Safety.
To return on the, at the first meeting in April.
Any other discussion? Any discussion from the public? Yes. Name and address for the record.
Henryeski, 62, Chazev, ways back. This is what I was getting at. I didn't, with the marijuana being passed in the state, I didn't want the jails to get filled up, and I didn't want Springfield to get filled up, because it makes me look like a fool. But enough of that. In order, in order to have alcohol, you lose your license for the next amount of years. And if you consume marijuana, you do not lose your license. But you're selling to one person that has 25 people around, and you're only having a joint this big and a bag this big. It has to go all around the people, and each joint gets smoked by the same person. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Motion to pass to, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
One abstention?
No. That was a no.
Oh, sorry. Pose?
Yes.
Thank you. Paper number 11,646-1, Mayor's Communication Number 15, recommending the proposed recreational marijuana excise tax. Without objection, file the communication. Mayor?
So I believe that the, the action we need to recommend on this is to...
Oh, sorry. Yes, so I do have, on recommendation of the mayor, refer to communication and order back to the mayor's office. Cohen, you want?
Sure, so the, so the issue is, as we, as the clerk reviewed this with us, they discovered a discrepancy between the reference to MGL in the, in the order, which was based on the preliminary recommendations and the final legislation that was included in the, in the ordinance, so, or, I'm sorry, in the CCC guidelines. So effectively, the language in front of you refers to the wrong statute. We've clarified that, and we'd like to bring this back to the next, to the next meeting with the correct language.
Just hold on, without objection. We have, I guess we can discuss?
I just have a question I wanted to ask the mayor.
All right, go ahead.
Through the chair. What's the mechanism for the, how the tax, taxes flow? They're gonna, they're gonna collect the 3% or whatever at the point of sale? It goes to the state as, as a excise tax kind of thing, and it comes back to the city? Or does the money go directly to the city and not go through the state?
So the, so the, to get ahead of the, of the process, if I can just cite the, what you'll be seeing at the next meeting?
Okay.
So the marijuana retailer shall pay the local sales tax imposed under this section to the commissioner at the same time and in the same manner as the sales tax due to the Commonwealth. So that is the Commissioner of Revenue, so then it would be remitted back by the Commonwealth.
Was there a hand up over here? No? Okay. Communication filed. Paper number 11,646-1, An Order... Paper number 11,646-1, an order accepting MGL, C64N, Section 3, regarding the rate of local excise tax of 3% on marijuana or marijuana products. Without objection, refer to the mayor's office. Paper number 11,652, petition submitted to Counselor President Bona from Sidney Smith on behalf of Graylock Works LLC to amend the zoning ordinance. Without objection, refer to Planning Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm opposed.
What's that? One, okay. And then we are on to community calendar and events. Any community events from the council or the public anyone wishes to announce?
I have one.
Open forum. Oh, did someone say... Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
This is for events, right? The Northern Berkshire United Way is going to be having a chicken dinner on, sorry, April 5th at 6 o'clock, and it's going to be a bounty fair. All of the donations will go right towards Northern Berkshire United Way, so I wanted to... People know that.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say the Northern Berkshire Coalition Monthly Forum will be Friday from 10 to noon at the First Baptist Church, and their monthly forum is on understanding and responding to relational violence, building safety in our homes and communities. I just want to let everybody know that.
Anyone else? The Roots Northern Berkshire Teen Center will be holding an evening affair at the Richmond Grill on April 14th. At this time, you can go to their website and purchase tickets, and then there'll be locations available soon, but that's going to be Saturday, April 14th at 7:00 PM at the Richmond Grill. Open forum. Anyone wishing to speak at open forum? Not hearing anyone? We will move on to mayor's concerns.
Thank you. I want to provide just a very brief update on the fiscal year '19 budget process. I'll just say that we are on target to present a draft to the council at the next meeting. We touched on the zoning. As I noted, the solicitor is reviewing, and we're just trying to reconcile and make sure that the advice that we received from DHCD is accurate in terms of how the zoning for that redevelopment zone is operant and what authority the redevelopment authority currently has under that. As we heard in a couple of the conversations tonight, we really have an effort, an opportunity to do some cleanup of our zoning across the city, and Larissa Bernstein in Community Development is working on some technical assistance from Berkshire Regional Planning to support a project to do that, and we'll be putting forward a timeline on that fairly soon. Just a quick update on the weather. I want to again acknowledge the work of our public services team, particularly during the storm last week when they pulled a 36-hour shift. I received largely positive feedback with some constructive suggestions from people that we passed along for action. We're in the midst of a second storm. It's slower moving, and the accumulation looks to be less than originally predicted, but it is challenging because one of the things we're faced is we're running out of places to put snow, not just in the city, but in our neighborhoods, in our driveways, in our sidewalks. So my asks to the community are, one, patience; two, compliance with the overnight parking ban, because if this storm does kick up and pick up overnight, then the crews being able to get out and clean clearly and safely is absolutely vital. And then I would really ask for adherence across the community with the sidewalk ordinance. It's inconsistently followed. I will be asking for greater enforcement following this storm and looking at, you know, staging for next winter, how we strengthen that enforcement. Everyone can tell us why that's a challenging piece of work to do, but it's also a question of fairness for the people who are out there right at the end of every storm, meeting the obligation. So it's a question of safety and civic pride, and I just really ask people to make every effort they can to take care of it, and if you have neighbors who aren't able to, to pitch in and help them out. And again, thanks to everybody. I know this winter is testing and spring is around the corner. And then the last thing, I'm going to invoke some purple privilege, I'm going to call it, to offer my congratulations to Maude Mandel, who has been, I'm sorry, Mandell, who has been appointed the 18th president of Williams College. She has really impressive credentials as the dean of the college and a faculty member at Brown University, and I really look forward to working with her and to continuing the collaboration between the city and Williams, between the faculty, staff, and particularly students who do work in the community. And just to acknowledge really that we are so fortunate in Northern Berkshire County to have both a leading private college and a first-rate public university right here in the heart of our community, so I want to congratulate Dr. Mandell as she prepares to take the reins at the college.
It's just a question to the mayor?
No, it's something that I forgot to mention before, and I don't know that we have another opportunity.
Well, yeah, we got councilors' concerns.
Okay, sorry, I lost my agenda somewhere.
No, you can still do events. You can still do events again in councilors' concerns. You get two times. Let's see. Liaison updates and councilors' concerns. Counselor Lamb?
It's technically an event, well, I guess we would consider it an event, but tomorrow, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting to discuss the paper that came before us two meetings ago around the gun range, so if anyone would like to come and speak and engage in that conversation, that will be happening tomorrow at 6:00 PM here.
I believe we may have received some communications from the neighbors, too. I don't know if everyone got those, but... Okay. Any other councilors' concerns? Yes, Counselor LaForest?
So I do just want to comment, and I spoke to the mayor briefly before the meeting, that an additional problem with Spectrum is that if you are a subscriber through Spectrum and then have paid your monthly rate to use the box to decode what they've encrypted for you, you can watch Channel 1301, 1302, and 1303 to access the local television stations. If you are circumventing that by using a smart TV, a Roku device, or some other handheld device, and you are using the Spectrum app, then you are not able to access the local educational or government channels. So Spectrum essentially is forcing local residents to pay an additional fee to, you know, access these local channels that were implemented by the FCC, I think, in the 1970s. So I would like to ask the, you know, the mayor to see what we can do about that. Perhaps NBC TV, NBCCTV?
NBCCTC.
Thanks. Can find a way to livestream by Facebook or some other internet platform so that individuals not subscribing to Spectrum and paying the additional fee for the box can still benefit from the local channels, specifically the government meetings.
Yes, Counselor Budington.
I know this isn't supposed to be a response, so I'll call it my own announcement. I've gotten a couple of requests to get the council meetings livestreamed or at least published more quickly. I promise you, I'm on it. That's in my court. I've been kind of busy with marijuana, but I'll pull some late nights this week and see if I can get it done.
Okay. Thank you for your subsequent announcement.
My advice is drink coffee. Let's see. Any other councilors' concerns? I'm just going to, this is just a request to the mayor and no immediacy, but if you could just put on your agenda, I apologize, I could have just emailed this to you, but it would be good, I think, for the whole council in the near future to get some updates on the Windsor Mill, where we are with that, Heritage Park, if there's anything new developing with that, the DPW lot on Ashland Street, Notre Dame, if anything new is developing at all with that, and the Pono land sale, which we approved last year, and if... What's that?
Watershed.
The watershed, yep. So, again, I'm not saying next meeting, but just, it was on my mind, and it'd be good to get some updates. Okay. And now we are on to, there are no licenses for this meeting, there are no communications or correspondence. Motion to adjourn. To move to adjourn.
Second.
I think it was LaForest and Budington. Meeting adjourned.